I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment?
I got one. That new roof on the Sheriff's drawls is looking good. At least it don't look like it's getting ready to cave in anymore. That's all I got.
Thank you, John. Mr. Vogue?
I've got something.
I'm just here to listen today.
Oh, I thought you were from the line. Good morning. My name is Robert Vogue and I am a citizen of the United States of America. An Army veteran, I'm a resident of Edgar County. This morning I want to talk about the airport, a couple of things. You recently put out a fuel bid, and I understand correctly, it was a two-year average of fuel sales, 8,000 gallons of add gas a year and 3,000 gallons of Jet A a year. It occurs to me that if you were to fill your 10,000 gallon Jet A fuel tank with fuel, you'd have three years, four months' worth of Jet A fuel on hand. I don't know anybody that does that. Also seems that if you put your add gas, fill those tanks up, you'd have about, oh, four and a half months of fuel on hand. It would seem reasonable to make the suggestion that you just put those products in those tanks back the way they were in 2008. In doing so, that would give you about a year and four months' worth of add gas on hand in your 10,000 gallon add gas tank, and about a year of Jet A in your 3,000 gallons of, what is now add gas would be Jet A fuel tanks. That would make sense. The other thing about the fuel bid is I know you published that locally, but none of the suppliers that I've noticed providing add gas are in the community and probably don't read your newspapers. So if you were disappointed in results, one question I asked was, who contacted suppliers? The answer was, well, I didn't, don't believe anybody that might have. So maybe you might have some more success if you go at it in a different way. The other, I'm gonna go on it longer. The other thing is regarding the violation of airport law, and this is the law that mandates zoning before any expansion. We all know there's been expansion at the airport, it's happened several times, and each time it's been against the law. And it happens to be the very reason the present project funding has been halted by the Division of Aeronautics. Because you don't qualify for the money, you never have. I've learned there's at least three property or landowners that suffered through the eminent domain process. The Ferris family and the Dyer families appear to have lost the most ground for these developments. Several other landowners sold their ground under threat of eminent domain. After a couple of examples, I'd probably have to do the same thing, because what are the odds you beat after three people lost their ground? I want to say this, and I hope you're listening. Since all property and air rights were purchased and taken for airport expansions, which is clearly a violation of Illinois law, then the county needs to divest itself of all of this purchased property and purchased air rights, including the Harper ground. If you did it, it was wrong. If it was a mistake, give it back. That's easy. If you did it and it was wrong, you keep it. Well, then it wasn't a mistake. Settling the legal questions of land ownership now and implementing the countywide zoning would seem to avert any delays in terms of federal estate funding in the future. The facts are, the airport can function within the confines of the original boundaries, providing local aviators as well as crop dusting operations an adequate base from which to operate. Which what you did in the past, it'll work fine. A couple other things, because I don't want to run out of time, Jeff. Am I doing okay? Most time of my life.
About a minute, I have.
How hard is it? Contrary to rumors around the community, Edgar County seems to have or had been the only airport in the state of Illinois that was expanded in violation of this Illinois zoning law situation. All the receipts, all the research I'm aware of and that I've done along with some others, failed to identify a single airport comparable situations. Last thing, kinda, is the credit card machine. If you guys are really interested in growth in your airport, you gotta sell fuel to do that. A board member suggested you fund that. I think that's, that would be great. That's the single, most important action this county board can take, support the airport. You can make this happen in the next 60 to 90 days because you've got the money. Your chairman, Jim Boy, has already indicated in county board meetings that the airport has about an $85,000 budget and they bring in another $60,000 in revenue. I did a FOIA request, I suggested all the details on that. It appears over the last three years, the airport has taken in $416,000 in revenue. There's expenses out of that, but again, we go back to the chairman's discussions and statements that there's about $60,000 in income every year from that airport on top of what's budgeted. Last year he didn't spend the budget. So I'm asking you folks to do something for the aviators, do something positive, reconsider the credit card machine, just do it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, moving along to committee reports. You wanna kick her off there?
I'll just, we got the, John mentioned, we've got the roof on the garage at the jail fixed. There was some deck rotting, so they had to replace, so it's gonna be a little more than what the original estimate was. I think it looks real nice to do it. They did a great job up there, so I was real, I'm real pleased with it.
Didn't take them very long.
No, it didn't take them very long.
Nobody got caught up in the razor wire? In the casuals?
That's what that was. He text, I was, my daughter, he texted me on the way out and said, "You owe me for buying a blood and a..."
About a half pound of flesh.
I thought he was kidding, but then afterwards I found out he was.
There's gotta be a better way to test that stuff.
You get one of the prisoners there.
He really works, though, right, Jeff?
He does work.
That's about all I have.
Andy, thank you.
How much of the deck? Not all the deck?
No, not all the deck. It was mainly in just places, and what caused that was ice damming and then the water coming behind and rotting out.
I think the west side, or east side, I think maybe they done the whole first eight, or four or five feet up.
Yeah.
And I wasn't there and they done the other side, so.
And he did, he got your gutter fixed, too.
Yeah, okay. I've never even thought to look at it this morning.
I mean, I didn't, yeah, he, that was, I really didn't anticipate it coming.
I didn't either.
So anyway, hopefully you got that, yeah. He got it and fell off the...
He was there Monday morning and said, "We'll be here tomorrow at 11."
Did you get any of that hail damage?
At the jail? We had, I mean, we had hail, the ground was covered, but we didn't have, I was afraid I wouldn't do squad sitting out back. I don't think anything had a ding or anything in it. We had about, well, what happened, where the cell part, the bullpen, all that, they come together, the water come off, that's hard. It broke the bracket on the gutters, saw the water runoff, went down into that window there. I had to run in basin about 50 gallon a minute for a little bit. But it was, there were drains down there, but the roof or the floors kinda done out enough. The water was coming from such force, it was going over the hump and then went getting back to the drains. I spent about an hour down there to squeegee.
I wondered if you had any squad car damage. They did.
Dan?
Did the last week's, I don't have much time doing it. I got animal shelters fine as usual. Stopped in to see Jan. I heard you had a minor problem with the new system, but she was gone, so you had to talk to hers. I think they got the wiring in for the doors, so ready for the door. I think she contacted somebody in town about putting in the doors, I don't know if that's true.
That's what I understand, but I'm not sure of their name.
Hand it that door.
Yeah, they got the wiring done. A neighbor did it, Mr. Branson. I suppose I mentioned that, but I didn't ask them to do it.
There you go.
They've got it done. Other than that, no problems.
Carl? Alan?
The only thing we have coming up is, as Travis Bush had mentioned in the last study session, that possibly we're probably looking at, as we talked to Mike about, bidding the health insurance issue. Two thides of thought on it, I think. Got another call in today, just to finalize for sure before we go into that Wednesday meeting.
And it is, yeah, it is on the agenda, so.
Right, on the Wednesday, I saw that.
Derek?
So the proposal for, or the ad for the proposals went in the paper, is that correct, Augie?
Yes.
Okay. I also spoke with the, one of the two gentlemen who took over Jim Mills's business, spraying business. He was out at the airport and wanted to see the spaces and talk things over. I mentioned to him, so he got a little bit of a lead turn on that. I told him that after, Wednesday afternoon, about what was in, I passed him the ad that went in the paper. So, don't know if they will be interested in pursuing the same kinda deal that Jim had, but I told him, you know, we would work it out and try to get the maximum use out of that space. And we were hoping to, you know, deals where multiple agencies were using the entirety of that space, you know, to the benefit of the county. So we'll see where that goes, but he was definitely interested in some use of that space. As far as the meeting, I'll get with you on that. Try to get with Mark sometime this week on our zoning issue. So far, basically from all parties that were looking into that, Hanson, Augie, Tom, myself, there wasn't a lot of agencies that are gonna be of any use to us as far as county airports in unzoned counties. So we're still hopeful that we'll find something along those lines, but we may have to basically build this thing from scratch. But we'll keep everybody in the loop on that as we go forward. Additionally, just started the initial asking round for estimates on a cleanup of the ISOR on the west end of the airfield there, next to Route 1, just to see what that would cost us. That's as far as it's gone, and it may not go any further than that, but we'd like to know what that would cost us to get a high hoe and a bulldozer out there to clean up the trees that are blamed beside the hill there. I think that's all I've got.
Is there or isn't there a meeting tonight?
I don't know anything about a meeting tonight.
Is there any thing with the advisory committee?
That's what I asked about. So, yeah, there to go. Is there, was there anything posted that you're aware of?
No, nothing's been posted.
The only reason I ask was if you go on our website, it says something about a meeting. It's nine at 6:30, and I called Augie and he didn't know anything about it, so.
And I've mentioned, I emailed Ross, and I think the issue is, so much of our website is driven by a calendar.
Yeah.
And I think it just populated up, and that's what that was all about.
That was fine, I just wanted to make you work.
I have received nothing.
So there's no meeting, there's no agenda.
There's nothing posted.
No, yeah, no one's, so I, you know, I was pretty clear with Joe that was my intent, was to have a meeting, he's been pressing pretty hard to have one.
Yeah, I thought you had it already set up.
I have heard word one from him, so, I don't know. That was the thought was guys from the field or what. I mean, hopefully Joe's okay, he's not lining a ditch somewhere. Okay.
He was in the ditch between our houses. Can I ask you one thing on that?
Yeah.
So we still haven't received anything back from IDOT Aeronautics, who wanted us to come up with this plan for zoning. And we've asked them, with my understanding is, what type of plan do you want us to come up for?
Oh, we got a response.
And they're, and they're not saying, well, here's the, here's what you need to do. I feel like this is kind of an awful, an awful guess test.
I covered that, Jim, in the last...
You probably did, because that's what I'm still understanding. I just didn't know if we got anything back from them.
I can read you verbatim the email, because it's a doozy.
Can you, by the way, I meant to ask you, can you send that to Augie so that he can forward that on to the state's attorney, too, please?
Be a treasure trove of use, I'm sure.
Well, but it still does.
Yeah, I was just curious.
We want to make sure no help from them.
That's, that's what I wanted. Because they basically said, okay, what you've done, even though for years we didn't even know what statute or whatever else that railroad was.
Railroad.
Airport. I'm not awake today, Aaron, just tell that one. No, but anyway, we didn't even know what it, what it was under, 32, 38, this thing, that thing. And so then we took land or we didn't take land or whatever. And so now we go back to them, and we're asking them, okay, if you really want us to do this, tell us what it is, and then what they say this?
And from Cindy Bouchere-Halam, who's the Special Assistant Chief Counsel, Illinois Department of Transportation. Here's what we've asked for IDOT. The airport board needs to work with the state's attorney in developing the appropriate zoning. Once zoning is done, I would ask the airport to have the state's attorney send a letter indicating he finds this zoning in compliance with the statute. Will that work? Question mark. So, yeah, decisive to say this.
They're not. So what they're doing is making us guess that, but we're trying to guess for them.
They don't have...
And then she's not gonna say that's gonna work until we throw that up there.
Right.
You were fired about this the last meeting, I know you heard it because you...
Well, I thought we got something back from them or something like that.
This is what you were at the last meeting.
That was it. Thanks for refilling, at least I'm awake now.
Sorry, but we need to send that to Augie so we have that official response and he can forward that on.
How'd you get all the grant money and do all the work out here if we were...
You're not asked, no one...
If we're about illegal in what we did, all those years.
Well, 'cause I don't think anybody knew what we were under for all these years. Who knows?
Well, what, doesn't she reference anything? I mean, obviously not, but shouldn't she reference something that we're not doing legally?
The initial was disinterpretation of the law.
Yeah, they haven't said that it was legal, illegal. They haven't used those terms. They're just saying that we haven't followed, we need that in order to continue.
And what we thought along...
On your deal with the state, let them let you go any far without crossing the...
Knocking eyes with them.
The whole, the initial, the statute that was brought up initially, you know, to me, as a layperson just reading it, there was enough, there was room in there where I'm like, this makes sense, we're fine, because it said, you know, the county should have the power to do so, Dallas own the airport. Well, a county that doesn't have any zoning, there's no real, there's nothing in place to zone the airport.
Right.
So that's, that's where we're at. They came back and said, yes, this is an issue, and here's, you know, we want to move forward, get it to be in place, was basically Steve's position.
And they based that under the idea that we are regulated under certain regulations that none of us really knew we had regulations until four years ago.
Well, they have that police car zoning that we are eligible to use. Okay?
So, yeah.
Now, I may be stupid, but even without zoning, nobody's gonna be right there and build something that's gonna affect the life of an airplane. Not gonna build a big tower at the end of the runway or how.
You've got to understand that throughout the years, the state has worked with us, Department of Aeronautics, to guarantee the same thing that we're gonna do under the zoning, but it wasn't due, or it wasn't done under the actual zoning. So a lot of the stuff that is required of the zoning is already done.
So much zoning gonna accomplish if we're zoning.
It's the statute in place.
It's the law.
Okay.
Quickly.
Real quick, I've been a couple weeks since I read that statute, but I believe that in order to establish zoning, you have to first appoint a zoning commission that does that for you.
Right.
I wonder when the guy is gonna do that.
Hey, once we meet with, we have not been able to get with the state's attorney.
All right, gotcha.
Okay? And that's been the...
So then you will eventually appoint one, I guess.
We will talk to the, I'm not saying we're gonna do anything until we talk to the state's attorney. If I said, yes, we're gonna do that, and then we didn't because of some other reason, I don't want to be caught on that hook, okay? I want to talk to the state's attorney, with Derek, and find out, and come back to the board and says, this seems reasonable on how we should approach this, okay?
It'd be nice if you just bypassed the state's attorney and you talk directly to IDOT Aviation employers and say, you know, if we're really gonna try to do this and do it correctly for once.
You mean like we tried already?
Yeah, you know, that would be really sweet.
That would be sweet.
Say, but Terry and I don't know how to do it.
Well...
You just, yeah.
I mean, it wasn't like I asked her for that information, it was the director of aviation.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, it was, yeah, we'll help you. And that's our help, so.
I know that. We're from the government, we're there to help you.
Any other questions on this issue?
You did review this with me, I didn't.
As long as it's not a, okay.
Need some more coffee, Al, I'll get it for you.
When government agencies don't go back and analyze the applications of the grants and the information, the assumption is, if you're a government agency and you send documents to the state, you're in compliance. So when you ask, how could we be in this situation where the Division of Aeronautics or FAA didn't keep this from happening or help us out, it's because they didn't know. And that is in the second year, that is exactly what happened under $880,000 grants. You had people here that knew the difference and misled the state and FAA.
Okay, that's supposition, that's all that is. That's supposition.
Proof.
All right. I gave you an opportunity.
I appreciate that.
All right? That's all we're gonna hear. Anything else from you guys? I wanted to let you know I did not bring you a copy of the budget because it's not all updated yet. So I will get you a copy on Wednesday because it would have been basically, I didn't bring you.
Oh, okay, I see.
I didn't bring you a copy because there's no payrolls on it, there's very little on it. We're getting monies in. I did talk to Monte again, which we always have a lot of fun with Monte, and we are going to in fact get more than what they had originally told us and budgeted for. Not a lot, but I mean, at least it's not gonna be less than. So that's in the pipeline, and we've got a replacement tax, we've got sales tax, we've got some other things that are coming down the pike on time, and by Wednesday there may even be more. So I wanted to let you know why you don't have the budget in hand, okay? Augie, did you want to go over the agenda to make sure everybody has an idea of what's going on and why and how come? Does anybody have any questions on the agenda?
I was just curious on this audit, and I know you sent that around, I appreciate that. I looked at that very briefly, because it's one of those things that, you know, sits right there next to your head. I guess I was also hoping there was gonna be some time that Joe would maybe address it.
He is.
But I mean, to, more so than in a board meeting, I, I...
It wasn't practical for him to do. I asked him to do that. Did you send out the administrative letters with that that were included? Okay.
I think he did, I think I got those, too.
Right.
On your, on your things you sent out about...
Yeah, were they included in there?
I thought they were.
Yeah. I got mine, I just want to make sure everybody... Maybe not.
And I don't know, I've looked at those in the past and had questions, but I don't, you know, like everybody else, this is not really totally us as far as what we do. I'm not sure we have any questions to ask, or if there are other questions we should ask. Yeah, that's, that was my only concern.
Well...
I guess we can, we can get those when we ask you whatever we're gonna do on Wednesday, right?
And then we can table it, and we can file an extension or whatever we want, but we have to, we have to send that on the state. And we can always, even if we have some questions, we can always have some questions later on because materially it's not gonna change. Okay?
Augie, on yours, whenever ours going through this, what is, what is the county farmland committee? I see you were appointing the guy here, some others to that. Does anybody know what that is?
Yeah. Yes, we do. Well, every year we're required to have a meeting with the farmland, the county farmland committee to review assessment. And Dina has...
What the state is requiring and what the state is basically mandating.
Sure. Dina reminded us that we need to do that.
And in the past, we haven't done it formally. And I discussed it with Augie, and I thought it would be better to do it formally so we didn't run into a problem at some point with the state or with constituents that we hadn't done it properly.
You're talking about, we haven't formally done it at the county board?
That's what I mean, yes.
Okay, so we've, I know we've had meetings.
But I figured it would be nice to address it at a county board meeting so everybody could, like you're asking right now, that we know what's going on.
So this isn't like the assessment review or duty, you know, whatever?
No, but the...
Are you, is Carl's gonna be appointed on their basis as a, just as a farmer or as an agriculture person or as a board member?
A farmer.
Is there a member?
The makeup of that committee is supervisor of assessment.
Okay.
And the chairman of the board of review committees.
Okay.
And then three other members at large, preferably involved in farming.
But they, but they wouldn't, wouldn't have to be, it's just like supervisor assessment?
It's, it's not a question of what party you are or anything, it's...
No, right.
It's, that's not a, that's not an issue.
See, I've never seen that.
Yeah, and that's why we decided to do it formally rather than informally so that it was out there, okay?
That's all I, that's all I had on this.
Okay? Anything else on the agenda that tweaks anybody's interest or... Okay? Jeff, how's Lucas doing?
So far, so good, I think.
Lucas is our newest employee. He walks on all fours and...
Makes you good.
He's made a, already a fairly positive impact on, on the county and the different communities.
I think they're into the first high school, Christman High School. You're getting ready to set up something for Shinos.
Emergency room at the hospital.
Huh? Have you been up there?
Yeah, he and four other policemen, couple weeks in.
Find anything in the schools?
Which is a good thing.
Yep.
Okay. I just thought I'd get into school. Is the shift work and everything?
Everything right now is good. We just, last, last week was the first week we started doing the alternating overtime. So far, it worked without a hitch, so.
And are you gonna then, once everything gets settled, then look at the judge and what he needs at the courthouse?
Yep.
Okay. And will, you know how we did that replacement for your, you know, the $16,000? We can range that very similarly so that, especially this year, and then plant it into next year, okay?
Yep.
And going back to Lucas here, so when did we start using?
Friday was two weeks.
Okay, that's why I wondered, so, and everything about the squad car that we had given to us or whatever as a part of that, everything works now on that?
I mean, I, I get texts from people all, saying, "Just seen your new canine," you know, "Man, that's bad looking out," and it's pretty sharp.
Okay, so everything on that part isn't...
Everything's good. I think he got a couple little glitches he's had to take back. I mean, it's set up, the lights, he can, I mean, he can, his car can be back there and he can be up here and he can pull his phone out, change his lights, shut them off, turn them back on. I mean, you can do everything from a smartphone.
And there's a single handler for...
One handler. This is what he's on, and his personality, he can go from a cute, lovable puppy to want to rip your throat out just at a command.
And there's an interaction or connection with city police, do those, because they went to the same training?
They went together, so. We've helped the city already, they've helped us already, so I mean, we've got a good working support.
Yes, Dan?
Finn Reeves tomorrow goes back to drug court. Is anything in the works about trying to set up one?
I talked a little bit, quite honestly, with judges, state's attorney and stuff, and that's not quite as simple as probably what everybody thinks it is. Of that, and just from the standpoint, I think that's an open discussion. I mean, from that, I think there are also some discussion working within Coles County. That has to be a state-approved program, and there are state guidelines that have to be written up. And there's, you know, maybe someplace, I don't think it's totally for, it's not gonna, you just can't turn those over and away you go. But the other side of that is, maybe even in conjunction possibly with like a neighboring county that already has one that the state has approved. And also, just to look at, I don't want it to get totally that, but the expense aspect of that, it's not just as simple as like, oh, okay, for all these people who are arrested for, they automatically go into this. It's not that. It's a long, involved process that those people, they really have to make a determination.
It's just a shame, because I see a lot of people that come to emergency room, that they overdose, we treat them for a while, and then send them home. And then the next week they're back in again. Whereas those people probably could be sent somewhere else, but we don't, I know we don't have facilities to do that. That's kind of a shame. Because a lot of them want to get cleaned, but they don't know how to do it.
Right, and I think that's the biggest issue, even in dealing with the recidivism of our prisoners or of our inmates or whatever you want to call them. It's just really a long, involved process, and it's not quite as, in talking to those people, which I'm sure they would know, Jeff, you probably know too, it's just not a simple process and it's, and it really is pretty costly. Even more sometimes, and it equate, because it's not cheap for us to have prisoners in jail. It's not cheap.
It's kind of interesting when you read the percent of people that go back to drugs[1763.99] as opposed to the people that are in the drug courts that don't go back to drugs.
Those are, those are the ones...
Fifty percent compared to twenty percent.
Right, but those are the ones who complete the process.
Right, and it's a long process.
And it's only like, I think it's less than fifty percent of those who actually complete it, that's not even talking about all the ones who went through it, that didn't complete, you know, so obviously, they probably weren't that successful, like they didn't complete it.